You're telling me that Kailas was...
Okay, Mike wants to go.
Yeah, the concussion just took him out.
I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of August 2nd, 2018 order. Call the rule, please.
Seaverton.
Here.
Kuyper.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Zingy. Kuz.
Here.
Isom.
Thank you. Would we please raise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us down to public hearing. Public hearing on resolution number 182707, amending the 2018 general government's operating and capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department, $263, and library department, $300. Anybody here to speak to us? Seeing none, we'll close that. It goes on to communications. We have one laid on the table who talks about fire department refurbishing. Brings us down to persons to be heard. Jay, the first on the list.
Came in early to make sure it's good.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Seaverton and council members and Assistant Manager Lacy. You might notice there's a few people here tonight and folks you recognize, city KPU employees. I didn't ask them to come here to the meeting. They told me to be at the meeting tonight. And the reason for that is you have on your agenda an MOU for giving the lineman an additional $2 per hour on their premium. Now, nobody's opposed to that, but what I heard, and believe me, I've got a lot of people coming to the office wondering where they are in that, in that $2 additional pay. Back in 2013, the council approved a compensation study that the results showed that the mean wage for the city of Ketchikan and KPU employees, the non-craft, was 7.3% below median. Now, the city council chose not to act on that. And now, you're looking at doing another compensation study. And that's, kind of makes everybody wonder what the, what are you going to do with that? In my mind, it makes sense. You could just go back to the one that you looked at in 2014 and apply that. So, that's what everybody's kind of concerned about and that's why they're all here tonight. Any questions?
So, thank Jay for bringing that up. And in regards to the compensation plan, we're not rewriting the compensation plan. We're asking to update it to make sure that it's current with the present situation in the United States and wages across the board. So, we have to figure out where we are first before we can figure out where we're going to go. And so, that's in the process. We've got to the manager's office to get in contact with him and test it off and upgrade it.
Do you have any idea what the timeframe is before that?
Do you have anything, Lacy?
Yeah, so, we have asked Ralph and, excuse me, Ralph Anderson and associates to put a proposal together to bring back to the council, which will probably be at the September 20th meeting. And then, once that's approved, the process is lengthy. I believe last time it probably took five, six months to go through the entire comp plan for KPU and general government.
So, and the process is that, of course, we have to find out where we are to make sure that we're going to move forward. And for everybody here, it's about recruitment and retention. And I think that's a common issue across the United States now. And definitely in Alaska, and how we, we have a lot of employees that are retiring out. Good for them, but we have to replace them with quality employees. And it's getting harder and harder to attract them and we understand.
Well, and one of the issues that you should be well aware of is that within the city in KPU, you have the highest amount of job openings that you're having difficulty filling that you've ever had in the history of Ketchikan. And, I mean, that's pretty, a pretty telling story in itself.
And if you've been watching the borough, they're also doing a wage study if I understand correctly. And I think there are other communities around the state and around the nation doing the same thing. So, that's where we're at with that.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Jay? Tell me. Thank you, Jay. Gretchen.
Hi. My name is Gretchen Pike. I work at the Department of Environmental Conservation in the Division of Water and the Juno Office. So, I'm here sampling yesterday and tomorrow the beach and the creeks samples. I met with Seth today to talk about a few things. And he mentioned that you had a city council tonight. So, I'm here, but unfortunately, I'm leaving in just about 20 minutes because I need to catch a flight. But I wanted to make sure that I said hello and see if there's any questions. I know that DEC just posted an advisory on eight of the beach locations that we've been monitoring. So, if there's any questions that I can help out with or...
Go ahead.
It's my understanding this is an issue not only in Alaska, but on the east coast. Because they're having huge red tides over our continent.
Well, this isn't red tide, but definitely nationwide in the warmer, lower 48, there is, they do more beach monitoring than we do up here. Because the beach grant is through the EPA and it's for recreational contact use. So, primary contact, swimming, that type of thing. We don't have it as much here, but we do get a small grant to test our waters. So, there is issues with bacteria definitely down the lower 48.
So, are they, is your department working on identifying the sources or...
Well, there's, there's multiple sources throughout the whole coastline. What we've done is we sample for fecal coliform and enterococcus. And enterococcus is a good indication of human health risk. So, that's why we're testing for that. We're also testing a new method called microbial source tracking. It's called MST tracking. And you can actually do the DNA for different markers and kind of track down where the sources might be coming from. So, we sampled that on, I should back up for a second. Ketchikan Indian community is our samplers. I'm just helping out today because I needed a little, little help with staffing. So, the microbial source tracking DNA markers that we're going to test for from our August 9th sampling round is dog, gull, and human sources. And that'll give us a good idea of just how we can kind of track back from the marine environment, what possible sources there might be.
Thank you.
When might we expect some reports to come out telling us the results of your...
Good question. We have four more samples left. So, our last sample is going to be on September 12. That makes a good, I think I'm guessing, we started on May 17 and we've been sampling weekly. So, throughout the recreational period. And that's what the grant requirements, you know, ask us to do. So, we can't go through the whole winter season. It's just not eligible under the beach grant. So, unless you're down in Florida. So, we will get that data together. It takes a little bit to process it. I'm actually going to be writing the report and then it goes up to my management. They look at it. This one might even, you know, the commissioner might take a glance at it too before it goes out. So, what we'll do is, everything is posted on our webpage. So, when I get the information, say, from the local lab, R&amp;M Labs, which is wonderful that you have a lab that can do bacteria in town because it's a really short holding time. So, when I get that back, I put it immediately on the webpage. So, if anybody's interested in the results or what locations or what they can do to help protect themselves if there is bacteria in the water, it's all in that webpage and I do it immediately when it comes in. So, to answer your question, the report, I'm going to start working on it right away. It takes a little to get through the process. So, last year, I think we got it out in January or February, but we had a new director that was in that position. So, he really needed to get up to speed. So, it, as early as maybe December, but maybe February again.
Question. Would it not be feasible to do testing through the winter months to rule out cruise ship issues?
Well, we sampled prior to cruise ship. And the cruise ship has permits that they, that they follow and they do their monitoring. Last year, they had no exceedances of bacteria. This year, they have had no exceedances of bacteria. Their treatment systems onboard are a tertiary system. So, it is far surpassing anything that you have here in town. So, we've got primary and secondary here in town. This is tertiary. It's a, it's a really, the system is designed to have zero bacteria coming up. And that's what we're seeing.
Close to drinking water standard.
Yes.
Is Ketchikan the only community you're sampling in?
No. Over the years, we've been doing this process from, started the beach grant in about 2002. We've gone through many different communities throughout Alaska. Right now, we're just doing Kinnai River and Ketchikan. We have limited funding. So, and it's kind of like a volunteer process where the community will fill out a survey and we'll figure out if we can actually do the sampling in that location. And then, we go forward. So, people, we've done Juno and Haynes. Oh goodness, there's a long list. Dillingham, Knack Knack, all over the state. So, now, it's just, it's time for Ketchikan and Kinnai River.
So, that was a question I was going to ask. Was Ketchikan's done prior, started last year? Was it done prior to that?
Not that I'm aware of. They might have done like a tiny little pilot study. I think they did some where they took maybe two or three samples at the beginning of the holes, you know, 2002, 2003. But it was really very preliminary. I wouldn't put too much weight on those numbers.
Anybody else? Thank you, Gret.
You're welcome. And thank you for having me.
Riley.
Was it, oh, you know, there's going to be so many people here, but I was just reading the care...
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Riley Gas, 3419 Denali Avenue. But I was just reading the CARE-BD article today about, sounds like you guys are going to vote on possibly outlawing fireworks in the town. And I just want to comment on it real quick. Like, it seems to me that that's kind of a little bit of, it just seems a little unnecessary, one, to be spending the time on. And two, you know, there's a lot of people that like to use fireworks on Fourth of July over here. A lot of kids do. And just looking into that, it seems to me like, if we're going to go through the trouble of that, I mean, are you going to give a ticket out to every kid who's shooting fireworks off town? It just seems to me like in Ketchikan, it seems a little unnecessary. I mean, we're not California or anything. Seems a little petty to me. That was just my take.
Appreciate your opinion.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to the council that hasn't signed up? Is there anybody else?
How's it going? My name is Sam Westgar, 3720 Alaska Avenue. I got asked to come up and speak today by one of my brothers. He came up today with a little list of the people that have left in the last four and a half years since he's been here. There are 17 of them that left on their own accord. And there's at least four that have retired. One of them, I know that retired because he just went off and retired here and went work somewhere else. You guys know we got a problem in this town. I was looking up on some of the sites today that Ketchikan is one of the lowest mean wages and salary. I believe it's salary.com. But anyways, you guys did a $2 raise for the power lineman. That helps. But there's a lot of people in this town that could use some money too. The boroughs looking at it. You guys need to look at it. Like Jay said, when we did the study in 2014, 13, 14, nothing happened. 70 grand down the drain. Nothing happened with it. What's going to happen with this one? Is it going to go down the drain too? Hope you guys look at it and realize that, as you can see, spur of the moment, how many people we got in here. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody else? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on into consent agenda. If there's no objections, I would like to add 7B2, the budget transfer to telecommunications division 4G LTE capital project. Hearing none, we'll move that to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you read the items?
Actually, no.
Oh, we need a motion.
Move consent.
Then move and second it.
Approval of minutes of regular city council meeting of August 2nd, 2018. Resolution number 182707, amending the 2018 general government operating and capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department of $263 and the library department of $300 and authorizing budget transfers for the fire department. Resolution number 182704, appointing the election workers for the regular municipal election to be held on October 2nd, 2018. Approving the appointment of members of the canvas board as authorized by the city clerk. Request for removal of trees within the three and a half alley right of way. And that was presented by Freezer Priscilla. 7B2, a budget transfer for the telecommunications division 4G LTE capital project.
Anybody want to speak to any of them? The only thing I'd like to do is thank those that are willing to sit on the canvas and move forward for their service. Did anybody else? Would you please call the rule?
Kuz.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Kuyper.
Yes.
Seaverton.
Yes. So, that brings us down to six unfinished business and six A1 ordinance number 18-1872, adding a new chapter 7.04 entitled healthcare transparency to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, second reading. So, this is already a motion that's on the table? Are we going to make it?
No, the motion needs to be made too. And it's recommended to defeat.
Correct. Yeah. The state of Alaska has already passed a bill in regards to this. And in that bill, they talk about not allowing local communities to pass similar type bills so that it all goes through the state. And I think we started first and then the state took it up and finally got it through. And so, it's kind of a redundant thing. And it just took their time. It suggests that we vote this death.
Your honor.
Yes.
Move the city council approve in second reading ordinance number 18-1872, adding a new chapter 7.04 entitled healthcare transparency to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, giving such direction to the healthcare transparency committee as determined appropriate by the city council and establishing effective date.
Second. Then move and second it. Mark, anything?
Yeah, I looked through the state ordinance and it looks like it covered a lot of what we were trying to accomplish. And right now, I don't see any reason to move ahead with our... We can't create anything more restrictive anyway. So, we should see how the state ordinance goes and we can always revisit it later.
Dave.
Yeah. The devil's in the details always with these sort of things. I miss seeing the actual, the full state here. I've just gone through it a little bit. It looks okay now, but I suspect we're going to be... There's always a loophole in these things. In the same way that there was a loophole with the Uber situation. Where the circumstances, we don't want you to take any action beyond what we're doing because we're going to take care of it. Well, if there's a loophole in here, folks will find it and it'll be back to us again. So, thank you.
The only thing I would, I would suggest is that, I'm sorry. I like that idea of actually having a committee that goes over it to make suggestions to the state or look at the different, like we did with the marijuana. There was multiple people that went over that. And actually, those loopholes, they sealed those loopholes by doing, being more diligent. And like Dave said, I just think that, I read through this and maybe I didn't really see anything, but I can see where, there's a few places where it may not apply. But then, we're looking at same problems again.
So, do we have a committee formed at this point that brought us to this part of the motion?
Yes, we do. They've only met the one time.
Okay. But there is an option to leave them in place through the period of time where we can send recommendations or ask questions of them?
Yes. Vice Mayor Seaverton, if you would like to direct that committee to reconvene to evaluate the Senate bill and make recommendations, you can include that as part of the motion rather than dissolve the committee.
Any objections to that? So, we'll add that.
As direction. I would not make it as part of the motion. I'd just add it as...
Add direction. Correct. That's fine. So, again, the motion's on to, on the table. Madam Chair, or Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, would you call the rule?
Kuyper.
Yes.
Reclaimations to defeat. Do you want to go for a...
Well, reclaimations is to defeat, right?
Yeah.
Not the, if you vote yes, you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I was yes to defeating it.
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't we supposed to not have negative motions here?
Yeah. It's not a negative motion. That's why you have to defeat it.
Okay. No.
Gage?
No.
Flora?
No.
Seaverton?
No.
Kuz?
No. That motion is defeated. That brings us to new business, general government. Item A1, Ketchikan Fire Department Emergency Response Apparatus Assessment, Emergency Service Consulting International, ESCI. Motion.
Your honor.
Yes.
I move the city council accept emergency services consulting international's assessment of the Ketchikan Fire Department Emergency Response Apparatus and direct the city manager and fire chief to prepare the fire department's 2019 draft operating and capital budget in accordance with the fire chief's memorandum dated July 31st, 2018.
Second.
Then move and second it. Mark?
Really interesting report. I think in the short time that I've been on this city council, this particular topic may present the greatest amount of savings that we as the council have been able to participate in. A lot of times, a lot of the stuff in the budget is fairly memorialized by the time it even comes to us for review. But it looks like, reading through this apparatus review, that we have the opportunity to save some significant money going forward on both fire apparatus and ambulances. And then, today, I took the liberty of contacting the shop supervisor in the Matneus because it's in a borough. As you're all aware, they are going through the refurbishing process on some fire apparatus right now. And I just wanted his unfiltered opinion. So, he sent me a short memorandum and I made sure that all you folks had copies of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, I think we need to approve what we've got here. But just to remind everybody, and I think it's in the plan, refurbishing equipment is on the table. And we will make the decision as it comes forward. Because if we can save money and we get the same amount of years back out of it, we're going to do it.
And this is a guarantee, right? Like...
Can I, what?
If they do this, we get a warranty on this too, right?
Abner, would you like to answer some of the questions?
Yes, sir. Abner Hoag, Fire Chief. So, warranty, you get a one-year warranty, I believe it was, from the company. They warranty their work for a short period of time. They do suggest that you potentially could see a service that's the same as the original service life. However, they did caveat when I spoke to Fire Trucks Unlimited, that typically, they're reservicing these apparatus in agencies that are refurbishing them after like eight years of service, not after 30 years or 20 years of service like what we're going to be doing. Because we're not putting huge use on these apparatus. So, they're much older by the time we would be refurbishing them. So, they do put some caveats in there. We absolutely, refurbishment is on the table and, and we should be looking at that. And we will be looking at that in the future. Moving forward, we will be evaluating this year, the apparatus that would be considering next year so that we can budget appropriately. We'll be a little crunched on this, this first year, but we'll get through that. And then, in the future, you'll start to see, you know, in the current year, we'll bring forward the options for the apparatus that would be in the next year's budget. You'll make a decision on that and then we'll budget for it appropriately.
So, Abner, I appreciated this report and it probably qualified what some of the comments we already had at the table. Some of the new stuff that I see coming out here is the smaller response vehicles. And so, I did a little research on that. And they, they can put higher pressure guns on them to atomize the water. And then, they have a foam capacity. So, the 150 gallons turns into 3,000 gallons.
Is that right? That's exactly right. There's a couple of newer tech, not even newer technologies anymore. A couple of technologies that are around that have not been widely utilized in the fire service, but, but are out there. And so, the one you're talking about is what's called compressed air foam system. And using that system, you can accomplish the same amount of firefighting with 150 gallons of water and 50 gallons of foam that you can typically with a 3,000 gallon typical standard water application. And then, the high-pressure systems are much newer. They're only maybe five years old. And by atomizing the water, as you said, it makes it go further. So, the way that water actually puts out fire, everybody thinks that the water gets on the fire, makes it wet and puts it out. And that's not really what happens. What happens is the water's converted to steam by the heat of the fire, reducing the temperature and putting the fire out. So, the more surface area you can have on the water, the quicker it will put the fire out. And that's why making it atomized into small particles will put the fire out. More than you probably wanted to know, but...
No, that's good information because I think it makes a lot of sense when you talk, because the thing was going from 1,000 gallon tank to 150 gallon tank, you go, what are we doing? You know? But then, we actually increased the firefighting capabilities of the vehicle.
We do. And those, that solution is not going to solve all of our problems. We can't completely eliminate the standard firefighting equipment because it doesn't work well on very large structures, which we have a fair amount of. But it can work on incipient, incipient stage fires. It can work on smaller residential fires, those sorts of things. It can provide us with better access into some of the smaller streets that we have and our weight restricted bridges and things like that where we have difficulties currently. It also could save us significant maintenance costs on our larger apparatus because something like that can be used on our daily, as our daily drivers, if you will. And then, bring out the big guns when we need them.
So, a couple of questions that I've received over the course of reviewing this is, how does the policy work to where we send an ambulance and we send a fire crew with it? An example was given, something was going on, a kid fell down at school or something. And they sent the ambulance and the fire truck showed up at the same time. The kid ended up being all right. But how does, how does that policy work?
So, we have four or five staff on duty any given day. Two on an ambulance over at Station 2, over by the landing hotel, and two or three on an engine here downtown. Depending on the severity of the medical emergency, two people often is not enough to deal with the patient, take care of all the treatments that need to happen during the emergent portion, and then load them up and take them to the hospital. We often need additional staff. Because we have them on a large fire apparatus, because that's all we have for the firefighting side, that's what they go with. And that way, they can immediately turn around and respond in case of a fire. We don't want to leave it behind, have no firefighting capability and then have to go on a fire call. And so, as a result, we send crews on both ambulances and a fire truck to assist. And then, if it's on this end of town, you don't want to wait for the ambulance to come all the way from the other end of town before someone gets there to start... before someone gets there to start taking care of you, especially if you're the one having a heart attack, or fell down and broke your leg, or whatever it may be. Uh, you want the care as quick as we can get it to you, and that's why we do that.
Thanks for the explanation. Anybody else have any, uh, comments or questions? Thanks, Abner.
Absolutely.
Katie, would you call the roll?
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kooz?
Yes.
Um, the next item is seven, A2, which is a request for direction on restricting the use of fireworks within, uh, city limits. The, uh, mayor in his ass, has asked that, uh, we defer this to the second meeting in September, which is the twentieth. Do we need a motion to defer this? Okay. Any objections? Thank you. So that brings us down to Ketchikan Public Utilities, uh, B1, Memorandum Agreement between the City of Ketchikan, DVA Ketchikan Public Utilities, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 1547. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council to approve the Memorandum Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and doing business with Ketchikan Public Utilities, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 1547, providing for a two-dollar increase to the hourly premium incentives of the journeyman, lineman, and lineman apprentice positions, and direct the General Manager to execute the Memorandum of, of agreement on behalf of the City Council.
We have a second. Been moved and taken to Dave.
No, I think we've talked about this. We're, you know, what, what was said at the podium is true. Uh, we need to be looking at our, our compensation for all of our, all of our employees.
Anybody else? Katie, would you please call the roll?
Severson?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Uh, Kooz?
Yes.
That passes, thank you. Uh, brings it down to Ketchikan Daily News, vouchers, five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move for the approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Been moved and taken. Any discussion?
It's that time here, we, we buy lots of ads.
Katie, would you please call the roll?
Kooz?
Yes.
Kuyfer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
So, uh, Lacy, what do you got for us under the manager's report?
Uh, in addition to what is listed, Vice Mayor Severson, um, I wanted to let the public know that, uh, relative to the testing that has gone on by ADEC, um, Thomas Basin was one of the areas that is now on an advisory, um, because of bacteria content. Um, we will now be posting, uh, no swimming advisories for Thomas Basin. Um, we've done this in the past. Uh, so, uh, Harbors will be making, um, doing postings, so unfortunately, on these hot days, yeah, kids will not be able to jump in the water off of the floating dock or off of the bridge. Um, also, uh, we are in the process of drafting, um, an ordinance to address feeding eagles, um, in the city limits, and we hope to have that back for review in front of the council for the meeting of September sixth. Uh, also, at our last council meeting, uh, we discussed with the council, uh, our ECG consultants, um, in terms of them coming to town and, uh, speaking with the council on, uh, hospital lease negotiations. And we had decided, or the council had decided, uh, that we would be doing that on, uh, September twenty-seventh, and our consultant is not available at that time, and, uh, now we are looking at November eighth, if that is agreeable with the council.
Yeah.
Started it, so, sure.
Any questions in regards to? Yes, Dave.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the follow-up on the, uh, the dumping of scrubbers and other things in, in, in the. What I'm wondering is, um, this, this came up, I, even if they are following all the various, um, federal and state requirements, have we ever considered actually going to the drift and saying, let's not dump in the harbor? I mean, they spend, those ships spend seventy percent of their time out, out in the open water. I don't understand why, even if it's, even if it's under the federal guidelines, I don't see why they're dumping in the harbor. I mean, maybe, may, can, do we have any recourse? Can we go to them and say, they, they may say no, but at least, at least we'll ask? At this point, it's kind, it seems kind of ridiculous.
So, Councilmember Kuyfer, my understanding of that is, obviously, we don't have a, a formal policy with them. After the issue was first raised several weeks ago, and we brought it to, um, some of the ship's attention, we had conversations with, um, folks on board, um, with ADEC, we actually did request that they stop. Um, but that was fairly momentary. We've not had a, a longer conversation with, with them about, um, stopping discharges while in port.
Well, they, they want us to build a hundred million dollar port. Maybe, maybe we need to, maybe we need to do a little, little formal discussion about saying, you know, do it, do it in Clarence Strait or whatever.
So, on that subject also, I talked to the State of Alaska ADEC and to their cruise ship, um, division. This, um, vessel scrubber discharge is so new that the State of Alaska doesn't have any regulations in place or use in federal regulation. But, uh, they are working on it, because they're getting similar complaints what we have here, um, in regards to how they're gonna manage that with the ships and when they come into the waters of Alaska. So, um, they assured us that they'd be getting something out. I don't know how soon that'll be, but it's under review with the State of Alaska.
Any other comments?
I did have, uh, one other, um, item for the manager's report, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, on the KPU side, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, um, where we're at with lake levels for Swan and Taiyi. It's been a very, very dry summer, as you know, um, and we are approaching, um, a critical point where, um, we're really seriously looking at having to use diesel generation. And there's been, um, different philosophies between SEPA and KPU, at what point in time we should be, um, doing G, excuse me, diesel generation. Um, if we continue at our current pace, we're at the point in about a week where KPU would normally, if they're going to adhere to their two-to-three-week contingency for Swan Lake, that we would start generation. Uh, so at this time, uh, we are looking to the council for further direction on if we should proceed with having two-to-three weeks contingency in Swan, or, um, adhere to, uh, SEPA's philosophy, um, in terms of continuing to draw on the lake until we hit a point where we can no longer do that.
What point is that?
So, just, if I may, for some added information, Andy here?
Yeah.
So, presently, using the STI, uh, in Taiyi, we have about a hundred and twenty-five days worth of water at our present usage. If we just used the Swan Lake reservoir, we'd have twenty-six days. On a normal year, we would start to get our rainfall the middle of September, and that's when we'd get meaningful inflow. And so, that's twenty to thirty days a week. Um, maybe sixty at the outside. I think that's what happened last year. It didn't release until later. Um, right now, out of Swan, we're using about two tenths, which is two inches a day. And we have twenty point four feet. So I did the math. It's a hundred and two days with zero inflow at this particular point in time. And again, just to reiterate, there was, there was, um, a back and forth, and I don't know which is the best effort, because we both have to understand that we're talking about keeping the power and lights on for the community in the best means and using the resources as efficient as we can. And, uh, the most efficient resource, of course, is hydro, because it's the cheapest generation we have. And diesel runs about, I guess, three times what we'd get for wholesale power from, to about twenty-four cents a kilowatt when we do that. So it's an important thing for the community, because, uh, we'd be adding a diesel surcharge, and the rain may come anyway. It's a guessing game, I guess. Nobody has a crystal ball that says what's gonna happen. Um, but there are some mitigations that maybe we should think about, and one of those is, um, we're concerned, of course, we have older diesel. We gotta take a look at those diesels long-term as to what we're gonna replace them with and how we're gonna manage those. And if we get into a diesel burn and we garbage one of those diesels, something goes haywire in them, uh, and it drops offline, what are we gonna do? And so we're looking at maybe using our hydros as the backup for that. But, uh, I got online today and looked around a little bit. Uh, in the Pacific Northwest, there's a number of outfits that rent and lease smart generators that can be plugged in to take up the load for what we lose in a diesel. And I think we should at least look at that contingency, whether we go there or not. I think we should look at everything that we can do. Um, but I'm hoping that our, uh, KPU administration and, um, SEPA can sit down and, and figure this out in the best interest of the community, and that's what we're looking at here. So, I don't know what the guideline is, because I can't tell you if it's gonna rain or not. Andy, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Andy Donato, KPU Electric. So, yeah, what we were trying to say, I think, through this discussion is exactly that. It's, uh, it's reached a discussion point, right? So we want to keep our eyes open. Uh, there's a couple of things that we looked at. Turns out that today was a great day. We had two visitors from, uh, from, from Juneau, from the National Weather Service. Uh, and they were caucusing at the library, so I was ma, I managed to intercept them. Now, these two guys are forecasters. So it turns out the National Weather Service also has hydrologists, and so I didn't waste any time, and I asked the forecasters, okay, your crystal ball says what for here? Um, and they told me their crystal ball says that we're going to have warmer-than-normal temperatures, which is going to be less than normal precipitation. So let's take that in context. I look at all these averages. I look at weather like constantly every single day, because of this. Our normal September is about fourteen inches of rainfall. Our normal October is the wettest, about twenty inches of rainfall. Our November, uh, is, is also in around the, uh, fourteen, fourteen range or so. The issue becomes, uh, in, in December, the temperatures are such that all the precipitation gets locked up on the hillside in ice or snow, so it doesn't matter at that point. At that point, we start drafting the lakes. So we basically have September, October, November to make up this deficit. If we get normal precipitation, will we do it? If we get normal precipitation, you add up those numbers I gave you, we'll make it. If we don't, we're gonna have a diesel burn, and it's gonna be a long one, right? It's just inevitable. Now, the other thing I look at is, when do we do these diesel burns? And what's the consequence? So, there's a diesel surcharge. It makes it nice in the, in the year if that diesel surcharge falls upon the industry that's here in the summertime, who's the largest users, and they pay the majority of that through the surcharge. It'll be terrible if we wait now, so we burn in October or November, and you have, let's say, November, December, January, February, March, April, and us pay the diesel surcharge. So had we done this before, you know, and used our numbers, the ninety, or two ninety, two ninety-five, that diesel surcharge would have just about been paid off by waiting. Now, we've done this, push it now to a different portion of the year. So personally, I think, if these forecasters are right, we're gonna have a diesel campaign. It's just gonna be a little bit later. I agree with everybody here. Too early right now to light them up. Uh, September, we'll see. And if we get a real wet October, we'll push that out some more. If we get another wet November, maybe we'll make it. And if we don't, well, we know we're gonna be burning diesel for a while, until we see the flip, which comes around in April. What else can I tell you? I looked historically, uh, the driest year we had here in Ketchikan was nineteen ninety-five, when we had eighty-eight inches of precipitation. Uh, so I asked our office to look through, find out who the manager was. He took a lot of grief over that. And he lit the diesels up in May, and we ran the entire year. So I don't know if anybody was here in that time, and they remember that? So we hit critical levels in the lakes in May, so May, June, July, I guess, terrible thing, right? We don't want to see that. Obviously, we're, we're a little bit ahead of that. So that's what I can tell you. It's, uh, right now, it's a good dialogue to have. We want to stay on top of this, and I think there's many options. And I get a lot of guidance from our group too, so, uh, and they're here. So it's important to all of us. So anyway, we keep the channel open. That's it right now, at this point.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Dave?
Um, yeah, I, I, we, we noticed that the, the pump prices have been, have been spiking the last couple of months. I'm assuming these ones were up to at this point?
You know, I, I should have that number for you, and I don't, but we just took on two hundred and thirteen, two hundred and eighteen thousand gallons in preparation of this. So we wanted to make sure that we had fuel supplies, and we also got, for the majority, we got our, our diesel squared away. We still have some heads that haven't come back, but those have all been replaced, so, so we're ready to light the diesels if we have to, and we have fuel for a while. Uh, I don't know what we got that fuel for. I can report that out next time around.
Any other question? Thank you, Andy.
So, one other thing that was underneath the, uh, or in the manager's report was, um, talking about our water quality. And, um, we had an individual stand at the podium and questioned what was going on with some of the items that was in a two thousand and eleven analytical report. And I want to make sure publicly we acknowledge the fact that we, um, are in compliance. Uh, there was, in that report itself, there's elements listed on the page, mercury, andium, beryllium, cadmium, nickel, selenium, were all found on the left-side column, but they were below the detection limits. In other words, the equipment that the labs have couldn't detect it. And so some of the elements that, uh, were reported on, barium, chromium, and selenium, were found and are shown expressed in milligrams per liter. In the same left column, each element is well below the MCL, which is the maximum contaminant limit, and is not a cause for concern. Dividing the MCL by the annual results, barium is seven hundred and sixty-nine times less than the MCL. And I just want to make sure the public realizes that we do the testing in regards to what ADEC, EPA, and those guys want us to do, and we do it on a timetable that they demand, and presently, our water system meets, uh, the requirements for that. And plus, um, since we've done some of this stuff, we also have, um, in our drinking water quality, uh, June two thousand and sixteen, reduced the amount of chlorine at the chlorination plant, added just enough chlorine at the two-point facility to form, uh, monochormate, moric, chormine, after adding ammonia, has had the effect of almost completely quenching further, uh, formation of halocytic acid, uh, in our distribution system. And as a result, for the past year and a half, Ketchikan has remained in compliance with EPA's stage two disinfection byproduct rules. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure and get that out in regards to that. Another item was the, um, wastewater metering project update, and I appreciate that, and it sounds like we're moving forward with, uh, trying to get something in, in regards to that. That's nine eight. But one of the things that I have a concern that we brought up was the fact that, um, we had requested or, uh, proposed a look into contracting the meter maintenance services. Uh, putting the meters in, uh, getting them all hooked up, making them work, is gonna be about a two-million-dollar project, and we're gonna probably get that out of a loan, uh, with, uh, yeah, ADEC Safer Waters. Um, but in other communities, as I see, what happens is, we can install those meters, get them up and running, and then make, have the responsibility fall on the, uh, whoever that meter's being supplied to for the maintenance of that. So what they end up doing is call, if something goes wrong with it, they call a plumbing contractor to come and fix it. And the plumbing contractors in town carry parts for the standardized meters that we have, and we wouldn't have to spend two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for another department. So just a thought, and I'd like to see something included in the report in regards to, you know, maybe fleshing that out a little bit. We're having a hard time finding and maintaining employees with qualifications now, and so I just, I think it's a positive step forward if we look at other options. All right. Anything else on the manager's report? Okay, city clerks filed?
Nothing, honor.
City attorneys filed? Must not be anything, not here. Future agenda items? So we have an executive session? What's that?
Comments.
Oh, yeah, we have council member comments. Dick, you have anything? Kelly?
LUPC also met with the, the weather guys, and they're working with, kind of be working with the emergency response teams throughout the southeast. That was one of the other reasons they came out, and that was kind of interesting.
Yeah. David?
Yeah, we delayed our discussion of the fireworks for a couple of weeks, so that we could take part. But interesting things kind of come out of this, those of us who have been around, you know, more than a while, remember, at a certain period of time, whether it was 20 years ago or 25 years ago or 15 years ago, at some point back in our memory, that because of some fairly couple of high-profile fires in the community, fireworks had been essentially banned in the borough. And we assumed that included the city. I know at one point, the city wasn't forcing that, and according to the report we got, apparently, it's not, it's not been happening for a while, so I guess when this comes up again, we're going to discuss that. I, I was of the impression that all fireworks were illegal anyway, and I'm surprised to hear that it wasn't being treated that way. And maybe that's partly the reason why our fireworks season now seems to start in late May and run through October or December. And, and as, as Mr. Gass said, I, we understand people shooting off fireworks at New Year's, we understand people shooting off fireworks at, you know, the 4th of July, but at what point does it suddenly become okay to fire off trench mortars behind someone, you know, all year long? So, yeah.
Mark?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I have nothing either, so again, that brings us down to executive session. One is a request for executive session, potential reopening of the three-year extension of the 215-217 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan, DBA Ketchikan Public Utilities, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 1547. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Request for executive session, potential reopening of the three-year extension of the 2015-17 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 1547.
Motion, just a little bit? Yep, the biggest paragraph.
Oh, there it is, okay. I move that the City Council declare the, the consistent with the Assistant General Manager's memorandum dated August 6, 2018, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiations regarding a reopening of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 1547 in executive session. In accordance with that, finding the City Council go into executive session in accordance with KMC, do I have to read all of that? 2.04, .025A1 and B2, and AS44, .62, .310, C1 and 3, to discuss said negotiations and auxiliary items described in the Assistant General Manager's memorandum, which matters include the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlements.
Then moving second to discussion? Yeah, I got, I've still yet to be given an answer as to why we have to go through that whole paragraph from either attorney or the manager. This is ridiculous. We should be able to say that this motion is as written, and we move it, approve it. So, just a comment. Thank you for those comments.
Last to hear, do that.
Katie, would you call the roll, please?
Seaberton?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yep.
All right, we reach out the hand to executive. There's nobody's face still. All right, we're back in session. We discussed the manager and gave our manager direction. That brings us down to item two, request for executive session, communication division, capital investment strategy. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Mark?
I move that the City Council declare that consistent with the Assistant General Manager's memorandum dated August 7, 2018, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss strategic competitive aspects of Ketchikan Public Utilities, Telecommunication Division's capital investment strategy in executive session, in accordance with KMC Section 2.04, .025A1, in order to discuss subjects, the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Then moving second to discussion? Attorney, the closing roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage? Do you have? Kiper?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
And again, reach out to executive.
Just to save my speaker's voice. You thought you were done with homework.
All right. So we come back in order, we met in executive session, gave management direction, so the only thing left is the general.
Bob, can I make?
Yes, you may.
Ask a question. I noticed that the schedule for doing the budgeting for next year was put out.
Yeah.
And in years past, except for last year, the council has tended to try to give some direction, and this year and last year, we did not. I mean, are we going to hold the bud, hold the line on the budget? What are we going to do? Are we just going to let it run?
We can work on that, I'll speak with the assistant manager, and she can...
Yeah, maybe we don't, maybe we're not concerned. But I know in the past, we have given some direction on where to go with this budget.
Okay.
Up, down, backwards, or, or, anyway, that's my, I should have said that earlier, but I forgot about it.
No, that's fine, that's fine. All right, so we have, so moving, Attorney.